For the call public meeting at Henry County Board of Commissioners, I come to order, and not only do they call a public meeting to consider adoption of the proposed FYI 2015-2016 budget, but also it be a public hearing on this subject matter. If somebody would approve the acceptance of the agenda as published?
So move.
Have a motion District One?
Second.
Second, District Five, any further discussions? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, so move. At this point here, I'd ask that the Entram County Manager, or the Budget Director, or both, to present a Budget A and a Budget B. And just for the benefit of people watching this, the only reason we have Budget A, Budget B. Budget A is the budget that the County Manager was almost completed with when the law changed and put the Chairman in the loop. So, my budget, if you want to call it my budget, was Budget B. And it's only some significant changes in it. One was employees getting a 3% raise instead of a 2%, which was in A. And I think it's $7,500 in there, some benefits, some extra salaries for the Tax Assessors Board who is overtaxed at this time, and I think that's about it. So having said that, I'm gonna turn the floor over to the distinguished ladies, and you can present it. Thank you.
Good morning Chairman and Board Members. As Chairman Smith has indicated before you are two budgets, but just so that you all will know, staff's recommendation is to present to you all Budget B. We can certainly refer back to Budget A, but based on the information that we've received from our department heads, comments received from you all during the public workshop meetings, and then the one-on-one meetings that were held with staff, it is definitely staff's recommendation to recommend Budget B. I will tell you the difference between Budget A and Budget B are twofold. There is a $7,500 additional add-on for the Board of Assessors. As you all are aware, there's numerous training courses and classes that our assessors must attend, so that is something that we did go back and add. And then Budget B provides for a 3% pay increase for all employees across the board. This is certainly staff recommendation. There was lots of conversation regarding the pay increase for staff, and just listening to the staff's concerns, looking at some of the expenditures that we've spent over the last couple of months, and then just in conversation with a number of you all, it's certainly our recommendation that the 3% should be what's given to all employees across the board. So this morning, what I will do is present to you all a resolution in reference to Budget B. As you all are aware, since March, we've had about thirty meetings with our department heads, our elected officials, our constitutional officers, and then we had one-on-one meetings with you all as well to go over the budget, to get your thoughts on some of the big-ticket items, and also to get your thoughts on some of the pay increases, upgrades to positions, and then various needs within the various departments. So this morning, I present to you, and again, please refer to Budget B, a resolution where we are, or you all as the Board, now therefore be it resolved that the Henry County Board of Commissioners, as the governing authority of said county, that the budget resolution of Henry County for fiscal year 2015-2016 shall be adopted upon approval at a public meeting of the Board of Commissioners as follows. General Fund in the amount of $134,672,557. Law Library Fund in the amount of $141,320. NSP Grant in the amount of $612,752. NSP Three Grant in the amount of $375,446. 911 Fund in the amount of $4,4,719. Special Court Fund in the amount of $1,112,270. Technology Fund in the amount of $106,7. Juvenile Assistance Fund in the amount of $28,445. Economic Development Fund in the amount of $499,755. Hotel Motel Fund in the amount of $480,385. CDBG Grant Fund in the amount of $705,336. Impact Fee Fund in the amount of $755,184. Stormwater Fund in the amount of $3,802,422. Airport Fund in the amount of $929,344. Debt Services in the amount of $5,368,12, for a total of all funds of $153,594,647. I will tell you, after the meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, staff did go back to the department heads, and we asked them, if we were to cut our budgets, or if you all were to cut your budgets by 5% across the board, what impact would that have on the overall budget? I will tell you, we have some department heads that are very protective of their staff, and they immediately told myself and Angie, we can't do it. It would result in us having to lose staff members. So what I had Angie do was two things. We actually took every department and looked at the total budgets for those departments, and what a 5% would do to the various departments. For example, under our Legislative and Executive Services, the Board of Commissioners has a budget of $463,338. If you all were asked to cut your budget by 5%, that would result in a $23,000 cut for that various department. Under Public Safety, there's various items under Public Safety like our Police Administration, Criminal Investigation, Special Services, and we also have our Fire Department. Under Police Administration, their budget is $264,0217. A 5% reduction would result in a $103,000 cut. We then also took it a step further, and asked the department heads to give us an estimate on how many employees would be impacted by a cut to your various departments. And based on the information provided, we would have to cut roughly 129 employees from our current payroll, if we were to do a 5% reduction. Again, that is not something that our office is recommending, and that's certainly not something that we're recommending to you all as the Board. I'm sorry?
What's the number again?
129 employees would have to be cut. Again, department heads have spoken up, and they've said, we have needs within our departments. We've heard from a lot of citizens that have come forward, wanting improvements along corridors, wanting the grass cut more, wanting to make sure that we have a presence amongst our police officers, and they also want to make sure that if there's an emergency, the services are provided. So we certainly cannot reduce our services that are currently being provided. So again, that number would be 129, and again, that's a rough estimate of employees that we would have to cut if we were going to reduce our budgets. And we also looked at, beyond cutting the employees, what else could we cut? Roughly, we looked at about $1.3 million that we could additionally cut from the budget, and it would hit various departments like our HR Department. As you all know, we are, hopefully, if the budget gets adopted, we will begin to do a pay classification study. That's something that we would have to go back and revisit if we were to cut the budget. We added additional funds to DFAX and to the library. That would be two items that we would have to go back and make a determination on whether those additional funds will be allocated for those departments. We also added additional funding in our Rec Department, because we have parks that have to be maintained. The Rec Department added two seasonal employee positions to that department. We would have to go back and reconsider those needs in that department as well. And then we also looked at the Maintenance Department, and cutting $35,000 from that department in addition to what's already within that budget. So we've tried really hard to go back and look, and to be honest, there's really nothing that we can cut at this point, simply because we have a lot of needs in our county. You have a county of 210,000 people, and with that comes additional services that are needed. We have a transit system that's needed every single day, and we're providing a number of trips within those departments, so there's just not any room to cut. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you all may have, or if Angie, if you have any questions of Angie, she'll be able to answer as well.
Any Board Member got any questions? If not, I would like to...
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On Budget A and Budget B projections, would we be able to do 100% millage rollback with Budget A and/or Budget B?
You said we will be able to?
Would we be able to?
No, sir. We would not be able to. And again, I think what's most important to note, because we've gone back and forth on what our millage rate should be, and certainly, the millage rate plays a huge part in our budget, although we do it after the fact. One thing I want you all to keep in mind is, next year, we have a senior rec center that's coming online in Hampton. We have additional fire stations that are coming online, and we have new parks. We have one in the Fairview community that's coming online that will require staffing. And I would rather be very proactive now than to be reactive next year, wondering how we're going to fund those staffing needs that we have with those capital projects. So it's certainly not staff recommendation to roll the millage rate all the way back, simply because of the expenditures that we will have to prepare for next year.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Commissioner, all the job cuts and the cutting services, I think that Sherry referenced, all those things would happen if we were to roll the millage all the way back. Also, Sherry, a correction in the number, I hear the number is somewhere around 247, not 210. I kept that number from Mrs. Fuller. Was that the number you gave me when we met a few months ago? You said you got it from the state?
That's what I ran from the state are based on, so I don't bother that number. If they tell me to plan my budget for state request on 247, that's what I'm going to do.
Okay.
But I think there is, I think it's, um, government's planning and budget, I put that as that number, so I don't know how they get that number.
I know we're significantly higher than 210.
And our numbers are based on the 2010 census with some room for growth, but I can certainly verify that. But I don't think we're at the 247 right now.
And we're halfway through that period, so...
Yes, sir.
Do you have a projected rollback on the millage at the B, $134,672,557?
If you look at the overhead, and it should be on your screen as well, and again, this is just staff's recommendation, the millage would roll back to 13.367, and that would be about an 85.5% rollback, and that would cover our shortfall of the 541,032.
Anybody else have any questions?
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just so I understand, I mean, because looking at the agenda, this is not a public hearing. This is actually where we're gonna be talking, and then we're going to be voting, correct?
We will have a public hearing after this.
So can we, I guess, have the public hearing portion and then come back to, I just want to make sure there's going to be a chance for us Commissioners to have discussion after the public hearing?
I think we have the public hearing, and then we can have any discussion within ourselves to make that decision.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, that's why I was gonna have it before we got into dialogue.
Sure.
And just, I'm sorry, for point of clarification, Commissioner, I think it was Moss that asked, the millage would actually be 13.538, which would be a 69.9% rollback. I apologize, I read the wrong schedule.
That would fund Budget B?
Yes, sir. That would fund Budget B.
What would Budget A be?
Budget A would be the 13.367.
Is it 5% rollback?
It would be 85.5%. And then the Budget B would be the 69.9% rollback.
Budget B is the correct one, Chairman's budget?
That is correct. Budget B is the budget that was prepared by the Chairman.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir. In consultation with staff.
I support the Chairman's budget. I'm gonna make it public knowledge right now.
Any additional questions for staff at this time?
Any questions?
Thank you.
If not, I'm gonna open the floor up for fifteen minutes. Anybody like to speak about the budget? If you would, come forward, state your name for the record, and feel free to speak. This constitutes a public hearing. I see nobody rising. The public hearing portion has been declared over. So now, the floor is limited to the Board Members for discussion. Yes, sir. District Two.
I guess I just wanted to ask, because as I mentioned in the last meeting, this is a two-part, two sides of things. We're voting on the budget today, but in just a few short weeks, we'll be voting on how we fund the budget through millage rollbacks or fund balance, even though that's kind of been taken off the table based upon our last vote that we did, you know, last Tuesday, where we put a fence essentially around 25% to ensure we had a rainy day fund for the county. I wanted to kind of get the take of the Chairman, because we kind of got hung up at the last meeting, that you said that you wanted to do the 3% pay raise budget, the budget you created, but then you also want to do a full millage rollback. I wanted to see, now that we've had staff go through the exercise of cutting the budget by 5% and the impact that have on employees and losing 129 staff, if we've kind of come to that consensus that we had hopefully had before we started all these public hearings, are we all in board on how we're gonna fund this too? Because I think we probably all are in agreement, we support your budget, we think it's a good budget you created, because it gives the employees something that shows them how much we appreciate them. It also gives the citizens right at 70% of the millage rollback, and then it's good for us just because we have a county that's growing in double digits right now, which is good. That's a positive thing. So I want to see if things have changed, or if you still are standing on the 100% rollback.
Since that's directed to me, I stand on 100% rollback. The 25%, needless to say, that's what the big kicker was. Budget A, Budget B, to be adopted balanced today depends upon taking monies, even on paper, out of fund balance. One is three point something, one is four point something. Okay, so consequently, on today's cost, that can't comply with the 25% fund balance. Now, having said that, what's the fund balance gonna be in November of next year? Okay? It would be probably in excess of 25%. Okay, if you go into October, in the lean months, what will the fund balance be? It's gonna be a lot less than 25%. So if you read the resolution that y'all approved, it has to maintain 25% at all times. Okay, so that's not practically speaking, that you can maintain 25%.
Now, actually, I want to correct, and we can get the Finance Director to come up and clarify too. I believe what I remember being presented was that 25% was going to be our annual threshold, but there were going to be months where we got into our lean period where it could cut down to 15%, which tied into exactly what you had given guidance, because you'd referenced the 15%. But those are for the lean months that it gets tight, but our annual, when you're looking at year-end, where is the fund balance? When we look at fiscal year-end, it's 25% is what we put the fence around. But we understand there's an ebb and flow. When you collect all your taxes, you have a lot of, you know, revenue come in, so it's sitting in the account. But there are lean months where you've spent it down, we don't have money coming in, and that's where your 15% that you had referenced to us all comes in, because there would be some months that it runs tight. Is that correct, Fred? I know, I see you scrambling, I apologize to put you on the spot, but I think this is a good exercise for all of us to kind of understand that the power of fund balance and having a rainy day fund for the future.
I think to your first question, the 25% that was set, is, my understanding, in all the schedules I've done and shown you, was based on as of June 30th, when it's measured, i.e. at the audit. There must be 25%. If at the time of next year's budget preparation, you would have passed budget amendments to used fund balance, such as what you've done this year and past years, that would have to be made up during that budget process. So in essence, you would start at the 25% as you're doing in this year's budget, go through the year, and you will have peaks and valleys. The schedules that I've done shows that after June 30th, by the time you get to September, you're down to 5% or 15%, whichever you use. So as a result, we know we're gonna go below 25 after the budget is set, or after the year-end audit, knowing that the 25 will protect us at June through September or October. Then, at that point, at least, we're not running out of money, if you would, at the end of September, because we started at the 25%. Then, when you do next year's budget, come May of next year, if from the time we started, and the audit is complete, of course, it would be complete, if the audit shows that we saved money, in other words, we're always working on a balanced budget. So if at the end of this year, the audit, instead of a break-even budget, we end up with $1 million in extra revenue than budgeted, and $1 million less than expenses, your fund balance would go up $2 million. That would be something you'd have during the year in excess of 25%. Obviously, we don't know today where the year's gonna end. We're budgeted to break even. That's what we're saying is gonna happen. When the audit's completed, you in essence would have excess money or break even. When you do next year's audit in May, or next year's budget in May, and you didn't use that $2 million, if there was $2 million, you would have that going into the budget as an excess for next year's budget. If the audit this year says your revenue and expenses were at budget, you increased neither, then next year, your budget, when you're doing it, you have no excess to start with, and therefore, you keep the 25% of your new budget, whatever that may be.
The question of, Fred, was your understanding of the resolution, and our understanding was that it was the fiscal year-end, post-audit, fund balance, correct, is the 25%? You didn't, this was not a straight-line 25% throughout the year. We understood there was peaks and valleys, as you said.
I never intended it, because if I would have, I would have had to gone ahead and said something higher than 25%, because I know in September, as the worksheets or schedules I've done show, we're gonna be down to 15 or less percent, so therefore, you'd have been, quote, in violation of it.
The other question, because I know the Chairman has referenced, was it ACCG, or who, what was the, I can't remember what the organization was, that there was 15% reference by the Chairman?
GFOA.
GFOA.
Georgia Finance.
When I read that, from my background, it looked to me that it was, that, as we talked about, you have peaks and valleys in your budget, 15% or essentially a little less than two months is probably the leanest you ever want to run it, on the ebb and flow, but that's not where you want to keep the average. Is that correct? Because I want to make sure we clarify what that 15% was, because there seems to be some misunderstanding on should that fund balance be 15 or 25? And I understood that there was a peaks and valleys, in your words, and that you really don't want to go much below that 15% in those lean times, or the valleys.
I'm gonna put this back up. I think this is the schedule I had.
And I know a lot of people watching this are probably wondering, why are we going to the details? Because my thought is, I'd like us to have a budget that we all agree on, and I'd like us to have a funding that we all agree on. So that way, we're a united front, so the citizens feel, they know we're all working for them, the employees know we're all working for them, and we don't come off as we're divided in what the direction is. Because I've heard from multiple Board Members, we support the Chairman's budget. I just want to make sure we all agree on how we're going to fund the Chairman's budget.
This is the schedule, I believe, I showed you last time, and basically, it said if we started, under this scenario, at 25%, which was at that time, at the time of doing this, $31 million, which was necessary, and if that's where we started, no excess, that was it. We cleaned it up, and all we kept was 25% at the beginning of this new fiscal year. We would end up, based on history, spending six, almost $6 million more, and as a result, the fund balance would be reduced, and as a result, we'd be at 20.5 immediately in July, down to 15, down to 15. So again, in preparation of what we know is future months of use of funds, if you would, after the budget or after fiscal year-end, again, if we, and I have another schedule that says, what if it was 15 to start? You can obviously just take 10% off a year, and you'd be down to 5 and whatever. The other scenario was, as mentioned, fund balance is not cash. And part of GFOA is, you have to consider liquidity, and liquidity is, what is your cash versus your other net assets, i.e. receivables and things, inventories that are not liquid and thus spendable. And as a result, you can see that our cash was at 14 or 4, and so, 2, down to 2%, 2.7 in September. Again, that's cash. So you'd be running it down to, based on, again, this projection, which was done about a month ago, you'd be running at those levels. So, again, fund balance is not cash. Cash is running less because we have intergovernment fund receivables, and we also have government, outside governments that owe us money because of grants, and we don't get it for 30, 60 days, or whatever it may be. So as a result, you have two different figures here. The one you're focusing on and mentioning is fund balance, which is this, which again is based on, starting at 25, yes, we're gonna go below. Cash needs to be kept, maintained, to get us through October. And right now, October, as I mentioned in previous meeting, in October, we do get our insurance premium fund, which is about $7 million. That saves us, you know, the what-if, which GFOA mentions, is you have to also prepare for what can happen, and what if the state said, you know, we're not gonna fund it in October, we gotta move to November. They may never do that, may do something even better. But again, those are the things to consider from a fiscally responsible situation. And then the other is, in this year, last year, our property tax collections were, people paid their taxes, prepaid them, if you would, in October versus the due date in November, which helped our cash flow.
So my last question on this is, so seeing that we get down into the 2% to 3% range on cash, not fund balance, I'm changing gears and talking about cash now, we're not running this exactly rich, or with a lot of fat in it, that, you know, to be considering taking from fund balance when it's not even raining outside. Is that your professional recommendation? Is that you wouldn't, you'd prefer to see us not touch fund balance, to run it any closer than 2.7%?
That was, that again is as close as I think you'd want to do it, and when you start getting that amount of money, you get a knee-jerk reaction on property taxes, other things that can come in, expenditures. I mean, we can obviously work with the departments, and basically, in one year, I know I worked with the Fire Department when I was County Manager, and basically split some of their purchases, and I suspect they're doing that now, but basically deferred some of them until after November. And as I said, some of that, you'd have to start managing, or if we're not already doing that, expenditures, revenue, you can't do much with, because you can't force people to go pay their property taxes early, or the state to pay you grant money when it takes whatever time they want to pay you.
So I guess my question would be, after all that information's been presented by the Finance Director, Chairman, do you still, I mean, are we in unison now on the fact that I think that we got a good budget here? Are we gonna be able to fund this all together too?
Let me make a statement. Obviously, Budget B would be the one that I added, 3% and some other change. I would support Budget B, and will vote for Budget B. I will not vote for the language of the state calling for an increase in property tax.
But we're not voting on that, Chairman. We're not voting on the language of the state.
Okay, I would vote for B or A. I would vote for that, because it's balanced by fund balance. Both of them are.
But you just heard our Finance Director say that fund balance was too lean.
Okay, but I'm saying, I would, this right here, and let's just make it real simple. I'll vote for A or B. I prefer B. I'll vote for either one. Okay? I would vote favorable. Now, if it comes up for the adverbal tax, if it has any language in there that we're increasing property tax, I will vote no for property tax, so y'all can do whatever y'all like to do.
But do you see the disconnect in the fact that you created this budget, but you're now saying you won't fund your own budget?
Why am I creating this budget? You only get to the fact, because y'all wanted me to do the budget. Y'all legislated. Y'all legislated, all the power was away from the chair, so y'all wanted this, so you got it. Did I want this? No, I didn't want to do the budget, and y'all gave it to me on March the 27th, after they had been working on it for three months. Now, go ahead.
Chairman, just to correct the record, I mean, if you go back and listen to the meetings from 2013, I supported your budget back then, too. I mean, if you go back, you've helped, you've actually been involved with every one of the budgets, so to say that that legislation has, has put you in, in this situation, is a, is a, is a little hollow. And I, I'm just trying to make sure, because I hear you saying you're going to fund, you're going to vote for the budget, but I haven't heard how you're going to fund the budget, and I, I would just want, I don't want us to get into the situation.
It, it, it's very clear. B balances using fund balance. Rainy day or not, it's used, fund balance, it says that.
But did you not hear the finance director say we don't have fund balance to balance it?
I understand what he said, but he's talking about cash flow, and he's talking about, uh, uh, fund balance. It's, it's two different animals. You know that, being a CPA. Okay?
But 2 percent, that's paycheck to paycheck. I mean, do you want to run us that lean? I mean, I, I would never recommend a client, I'd never recommend it for my household, that I would only keep 2 percent cash, because trash, transmissions go out, hot water heaters go out. Good God, if we do that in the downturn, or some type of hiccup in the economy happens, that's not good governance.
I understand that, so, I, I'm, I'm just staying what I'm prepared to do, and y'all do whatever you like to do. I would vote for B. I'd highly recommend B, using fund balance. I would, I would go, I'll vote for A, using fund balance, but I will not vote for in, any increase with adverbal property tax, period. So that's, that's pretty well clean for y'all to make a decision as to how y'all want to go. I'm hoping for suggestions, but I'm not going, I'm not going to change my mind on voting affirmatively for property tax. Just that simple. I mean, we have to accept that.
So you should have, you should have come up with a budget that actually conforms to where property taxes are, if you're not willing to have this value? Because I still don't think it's a tax increase. When your property values go up 10 to 11 percent, that's a good thing. That's something we should celebrate, and us cutting the multiplier, meaning cutting the tax rate, the millage rate down on what you're, you're doing. If your property didn't go up in any value, we actually lowered your taxes. It's only because your property has increased, and it's still, I, I can, I can pretty much be assured that it's still not back to where it was in 2006 or '07. I mean, so you're, you're getting more services with even less taxes than were paid in 2006 or '07. We, we agreed in the last meeting, this was all semantics with the state. You even said that if, if you could get the state to change this, you don't see it as being a problem. So, I, I just, I voted against the budget in 2012. Um, I was on the board back in 2012, and it, you know, it was never a fun process. And the reason I voted against the budget, I never had a problem with the budget, I had a problem with how we were going to fund the budget through a millage increase. And I think it's a two-part vote. If you vote to fund the budget, you can't then vote against the funding of it, because it goes back to my analogy I made in the last meeting, you're essentially hiding in the cellar, praying that we will do the right thing for you, so we can keep the, the, the doors open and the people employed here in the county. And I don't think that's fair to the citizens. I mean, it's, it's almost unicorns and Cocoa Puffs. If you promise you're going to give a 5 percent pay raise to employees, but then you tell the citizens, I'm going to do you 100 percent rollback, it reminds me of high school student council, where you promise pizza every day and no homework. I mean, it, it, it doesn't work. I mean, and that, that's not, that's not what we ran for, and it, and it frustrates me.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Yes, sir.
I kind of rang this bell this time around. What's going on to the public and to the employees? I'm trying to work with the chairman. Um, I've been accused of not working with the chairman, and I'm really trying to work with the chairman to, to get a budget that he can fund, that, that we're all happy with. The issue that I'm having, I, I don't really know exactly what the chairman wants, and what I mean by this, is the chairman has made a campaign promise, I believe, not to raise taxes and do 100 percent rollbacks. On the other hand, he's championing a 5 percent raise for the employees. I understand both of these, but we can't get from here to here. If you spend more money, you have to take in more money. Using fund balance to fund this is a one-shot deal. We can only do this one time. You couldn't do it next year. We would have to look at next year, and next year, we would have to, I don't know what the chairman would do at this point. But then the second part of this, again, the chairman's made a campaign promise not to increase taxes and do 100 percent rollback, but then he brings a budget that's $800,000 more than the chair, than the manager's budget. It's even further away from 100 percent millage rollback. Had he had gone $800,000 in the other direction, I would totally understand what he was trying to do and what he's trying to accomplish. But now, we've got a budget that's $800,000 more, further away from a 100 percent rollback, and even if we use fund balance, it's even digger, digging deeper into the fund balance. So I, I'm a little confused on which direction the chairman really wants us to go. I, I think the Budget B, which is the 134.8, is a good budget. I think it's a solid budget. I had kind of rang the bell last time, and I was sharing, I, I wanted you to kind of take a look, what would happen if we did do a budget, where we didn't use fund balance, and we, we did 100 percent rollback. And 129 employees being cut is pretty serious. I've talked to numerous department heads, numerous constituents, and I haven't had one person tell me what we need to do is cut our services. I know that in my district, we have a fire station coming up, and I expect there to be firemen in that fire station, and my constituents expect there to be firemen in that fire station when it opens. We've got a fire station opening next year. I expect firemen to be in that fire station when it opens. The constituents expect firemen to be in that fire station. This was voted on by SLOSH. This was voted on by majority of the people in this county, and it passed. We can build the buildings, but we have to pay for the employees out of the budget. You roll the budget up, there is no way, even if we were to push on with using fund balance, you at some point have to generate more revenue. Taxes are going to go up. Cannot do 100 percent rollback. So I, I just need some direction from the chairman on how we can fund this, and, and still keep with our 25 percent that we passed, and how we can fund the Budget B, which is the 134.8 million. I just need some direction from the chairman on, on how we can get there.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Questions?
Just so we're all on the same page, and I want this to be very apparent to everyone. If we vote for Budget B or Budget A, we are not going to be able to do 100 percent millage rollback.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Anybody have any questions?
Sherry.
Yes, sir.
Last week, I came in and talked to you about Budget A and Budget B, and we had a discussion about could we do Budget A, and maybe combination of Budget A and B, with a 2 percent raise now, and then look at another 1 percent after the first of the year, and maybe even make some adjustments. We talked about some, uh, some, uh, some other things, like the transportation. We're about $400,000 in the hole on that each year. We, we talked about adjusting our fees to bring those monies in. Uh, animal control, we talked about another $27,000 that we could collect versus the four cities are not turning any of their court proceeds back to us, that we should be getting, uh, in our contract. But, uh, it was my understanding that we could probably maybe get close to doing a 100 percent rollback with Budget A, and make some adjustments in the rest part of the year. Is that correct?
What we would have to do, given the, the time constraints that we are under right now, because we have to have a budget adopted by May 31st. Um, there were several questions raised as far as upping the fees for our transit department, and, and I'll be honest with you, Commissioner, like I've told a number of the other commissioners, um, when we brought forth to the board to up the building department fees, we had a lot of resistance with that. And we understand that, and we know that when you look at upping fees, there is some resistance there. Um, looking at the transit department upping the fees, looking at animal control, those are still things that we can look at mid-year, um, if that is the direction that the board wants to go in. But I, I'll tell you what I've heard from the department heads, from the employees, they've said, hey, the last couple of months, we've spent a lot of money. We've bought new equipment, things that we've needed. We've bought new vehicles, and it's really hard for me to go back to the department heads and tell them, yeah, we've spent this money, but we're having a hard time giving the employees a raise. And so that is why, I know we've had a long conversation about looking at Budget A, but at the end of the day, I think the 3 percent is, is what, what we are recommending at the staff level, and, and we don't want to see it go below that. We certainly can look at each individual department, and looking at the fees that we do collect, to make sure that those fees are in line with our county and what we should be collecting, but I certainly think that that's something that we need to look at midterm, um, and not at this venture, or not during this process, because we're, we're real close. And again, I think the, the difference here, and what we're going back and forth on, is the 2 percent versus the 3 percent. Again, the millage rate does play a huge role, but I think my understanding from the board is that we want it to give something back. Um, I know the chairman did express 100 percent, but I think I heard from a majority of you all, and maybe not a majority, I don't want to say a majority, but from a number of you all, that let's look and see what we can give back to the constituents. Um, I would be doing a disservice, Fred would be doing a disservice, and Angie would be doing a disservice, if we stood here and told you all, let's roll it back 100 percent, and then next year, we come to you all and say, you know the fire station that we promised you all, or you know the rec center that we promised you all? We can build it, but we don't have people that are going to be able to work it. So again, I think it's a wonderful thing to roll it back, certainly would be a wonderful thing, but I just don't think we're in a position to do that, because of the number of capital projects that we've promised and that we've committed to, to the residents of the county.
Yes, sir. District 2.
I want to make sure, I, um, because I had somebody come up, I actually had a commissioner, I, I don't know if they want to talk about that they said this, but I thought it was a great, great point that came up after the meeting, was that we have, and you just hit on it, Sherry, we have a fire station that's coming online this year, and just staffing that fire station, it has nothing to do with fire trucks or building the building, this is just keeping firemen in that building to provide safety to the surrounding area. It was going to be close to $1 million. That's what, that's what the personnel was. So I had, I had somebody mention to me, and said, wow, you know, with a million dollars, you know, maybe we could come up with a millage that came back pretty close to that million dollars. And I look at, when I hear Fred, you know, and, and you, Sherry, present, that we're going to give 70 percent back of the millage rollback. I think if I was a citizen, and I'm trying to, and I'm hoping this, this helps, because I, I really would like to build consensus with the chairman, too, because I think he's done a good job with the budget, because we've asked a lot. We've asked to give us fire stations online, we've asked to give employees, you know, extra money, and then we've also asked, we want to give a big portion of this money back to the citizens. That, that's asking a lot. It really is. And I can, and I completely agree with the chairman, 100 percent rollback is perfect and ideal. I mean, it really is what I would like to do. I think everybody up here wants to give as much back to the citizens, because we're just being stewards of their resources. But if I was trying to bridge something that could hopefully build some consensus, is I think most citizens would understand, priority number one for this county is safety. I want to make sure I have enough firemen, I want to make sure I have enough police officers, and that's why I want to commend, when we did SLOSH this year, we did, I mean, last year, we did something that's never been done before in Henry County SLOSH, is that we put fire stations under countywide, instead of making every district come up with them. That is, that's, that's awesome, from a leadership standpoint, because it says, you know what, citizens, safety is priority number one for us. We consider it not by districts, we consider it by the county. So if we have close to $1 million coming online from new fire stations just this year, and then next year, how many fire stations do we have coming on?
Two additional.
Two. And then we also have a senior center, and, you know, and, and chairman, I don't mind giving you kudos, you helped me put together that senior center. You did a lot of the great negotiations with that. These are resources that are good for our citizens. So, if I was a citizen, I would say, okay, they're pretty much giving back the, the majority of it, except for what they're having to plan for, for those public safety issues. And, and I thought that was a great point that was made to me, um, after the meeting, and I, I, I think it builds consensus. And that's what, and, and chairman, I, I promise you, I'm not trying to pick on you, I just want us to, I want us to be able to celebrate this budget and the funding of the budget together, so that it doesn't create a divisive event. Um, because, you know, when we have these millage hearings that will be in a few short weeks, you know, there will be some people that will show up, and, you know, and say they don't want us, they want us to do 100 percent millage rollback. And I think that's fine, and, and I, and I support those people, I actually believe what they're, they're saying, but I also know, at the end of the day, we have to fund these fire stations and, and do what we have to do for the citizens, and I just want us to be a united front on that.
Anybody else have any comments?
I mean, that was put up to vote, and the citizens checked yes, that they wanted those fire stations, and they wanted that senior center. So this is not like we're just, you know, winging it here. This was asked by the citizens, they said yes, and really to tell them, I'm not going to fund what you voted for, is really going against what they voted for. And I, I just don't see how you can't look to fund what the citizens voted for, the citizens passed, the citizens asked for. It, it just really isn't good governing, in my opinion.
Let me ask this. If you take Exhibit A, the budget, and take, and put fund balance in there, best on what we know now, can you go a whole year without increasing property tax, can you fund and pay for Budget A? No, I'm asking staff that question.
Before, we're supporting your budget.
I'm asking the question, sir. I have the floor. Thank you.
Just for clarification, let me make sure I understand you correctly. Your question is, could we adopt Budget A and not take any money out of fund balance to support Budget A?
No, take monies out of fund balance, based on the average of last year, and I know we started, ended, ended the audit last year, it was like 41 million.
At the end of, and don't quote me, because I don't have it in front of me, but you're right, we had about a $41 million unassigned fund balance. To get to, and, if we're going to keep it at the 25 percent, we had about $9 million that we could spend on, um, unassigned items. Recall that the board has already expended about $5 million on capital projects. It's the new equipment for DOT, some fire department purchases, vehicles for code enforcement, vehicles for animal control, um, an increase to our pension plan, so all of that came out of it. Um, so right now, we probably have about $2 million. So we have about $2.7 million left from this current fiscal year of unassigned fund balance. And if you're asked, your question is, could we take that $2 million and help to fund ballot, I mean, Budget A? Is that correct?
So what you said, during our most lean time during the fiscal year, our cash flow and money was down to a minimum $2 million. Is that what you're saying?
Are we talking cash flow, or the unassigned fund balance?
Unassigned fund balance. You're saying it was down to 2 million. Okay, how do we get all this 15.7, 15.2, based on the, the finance department's arrows going up?
I think what Fred was showing was the actual cash available. Let me pull that sheet.
Yes, sir.
Only difference between A and B is the, um, is the, um, increase for our employees, correct, 2 percent?
It's the increase for the employees and the additional $7,500 for the Board of Assessors.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't even think it's right at this point, since I think everybody up here committed to look, to support the chairman's budget, to even consider reducing the, you know, the, what we promised to the employees, the 3 percent, to now look at giving them only 2 percent. I don't think that's right. I don't even think we should even consider, um, Budget A right now, since that's on the table.
I think your question, it's not the whole question, because I know you talked cash, Thank you for your question. It's not the whole question, because I know you talked cash, but just to clarify, you mentioned the 41.6 that we started with at the end of the audit. Sherry, Angie mentioned that during the past year, you have assigned 5.2 million of it for the various items that were approved. That left 36 million, or would leave 36 million. With the budget of 134.672, at 25%, you would require 33.668, leaving 2.7 excess. That 2.7 excess is being used against the 4.2 shortfall. The shortfall is 4.2. So you have to come up with 1502 million and a half dollars. And again, that takes and wipes out what was left over of the 9 million you started with. So at the end of the day, this 4 million shortfall against the 2,700, shortfall, or excess, rather, is the million and a half, which as Sherry has shown, is giving back about 70% of the 1.088, which is 100%. And the rollback would be 7.76 instead of 1.088. So that's that part there, because we are using that 9 million that was, it's either been used or will be used for next year's budget. There will be nothing.
Could you put Budget A up there, that same piece of paper, for Budget A?
And again, same thing starts out here, the budget there, I believe on your resolution is 133.903, is that correct? And that was the, the May 13th budget with 173 added from the meeting. And again, you still start with the 36 million ex, of, of fund balance after using the 5. There was 2.9 excess, after you take 25%. The budget itself is 30,462 short, and therefore you need $541,000. Of the 541, you can roll back 0.931, or 85.5% to a rollback of 13.367. And then that keeps 541 and gives the taxpayers, in this case, 5.2 million back. This, again, is the, the county manager's budget, which is a 2%. The difference between, as I understand, the chairman's and the county manager's is 2 versus 3% and $7,500 for taxes, I believe.
But I think what's most important about this slide is the last statement that Fred made as far as the 85.5%. That is the most that we can roll back without dropping below that 25%. And then that would be in conflict with the resolution you all recently adopted.
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For you, you've got two resolutions. One, call it Budget A, one call it Budget B, for your consideration. Yes, sir.
I will make the motion to approve the chairman's budget, to approve a 3% increase for our employees, and to vote to fund a budget that provides a 3% increase for our employees.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Yes, yeah, he went B. Yeah, that's 3%. Got a second, District 1, any further discussion? Hold in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, no. Same sign, so move. Thank you so much.
Motion, we got 6-0, need adjournment. Somebody move, we adjourn. District 1, District 2, any further discussion, hold in favor, raise your right hand.
Okay.